City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City will meet in a workshop and City Council, City Hall Council, Changers located at seventeen sixteen West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, on Tuesday, August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, at five P. M. Row call to my left.
Jacob.
Jacob's here.
Evans here. We've got one citizen comment. The purpose of this item is to allow citizens an opportunity to address the City Council on items that are listed on the agenda or issues that are not listed on the agenda. Any person desiring to make a public comment must first sign in at the podium prior to the start of the meeting and be recognized by the presiding officer. Individual comment, citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Presiding officer may ask a citizen to hold their comment on an agenda item until the agenda item is discussed. The City Council has no obligation to respond in any manner to comment or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information. Recitation of existing policies or directs to staff for follow-up. Tina Hamilton.
Good evening. My name's Tina Hamilton. I own a homeowner and a business, two oh four Whispering Trail, Gunbarrel City. I have a couple of things I want to ask a question about animal control. I've asked it to different people of maybe moving it from under the police department authority to under maybe code like other cities have done, and I can research and bring you information how that operates under other cities. And maybe that could open possibilities of fundraising, loans, things offered to animal control. And I'm also a member on the Animal Advisory Board, and we've got our set members, but we would, I would like to have Robin Sikora become a part of the board. She has done a lot for animal control. When we were placing animals, she drove all over Texas, literally on her Saturdays off, delivering animals to their new homes and to other rescues. Also, I am a nonprofit no-kill animal rescue with my five oh one C three, been active on paper since two thousand and nine, I think, or two thousand and four. I can give you forms on that. I would like to offer the city my help in some way of whether it be through adoptions, placing animals, working with the city, working with ACO. I've been kind of, I've been volunteering with ACO since March, doing stuff, getting animals placed, getting them vetted, everything from picking roadkill up off the street when, when your officer can be free doing more important things. I think that's what I want to offer y'all's help in any way that I can. Maybe some way of taking some of the burden of the animals. I know I can't just do a straight blank contract with y'all because Carol may pull up one day and have a house with a hundred dogs. Most rescues can't handle that anyway, but I would try to at least take ninety-nine. That's what I wanted to offer. Is there any questions or do I get questioned or? Okay. I think it wouldn't, what little bit of research I did, it has to go through the charter. It'd have to be a charter change, I think, because that's written in your charter. And I was questioning about fundraising. I'd like to find answers on what we could do to raise money for the animal shelter. I think I can bring this up. I noticed that there was times on offering of buildings, but the fact that animal control is with the police department, certain entities can't fund police and fire. I think that's, oh, my time's up. So I was wondering, that was also why.
I guess that'd be the council's decision. Number one, discussion regarding animal control.
Yeah, I'll start today. I sent you guys a proposal from the Humane Society for discussion tonight. I have copies for each of you, too. It doesn't look like anything has changed. If you want to pass it down. We just need to, I guess, discuss what our next move is and moving forward. We also have some documents that Carol has put together that we need to discuss regarding registration and, oh, yeah. And fees. So this is kind of just going to be an opportunity for y'all to start discussing what you think we want to, we want to do moving forward.
I did some calling earlier today after seeing that they haven't changed four hundred and sixteen dollars per animal, which I think is outrageous. So I called some SPCA's and shelters around here, well, not so close now, in Texas. Everything ranged from seventy-five dollars per dog to eighty-five dollars per dog, nothing above. It infuriates me that these people want four hundred and sixteen dollars per dog, and I just don't see that that's fiscally responsible on our part to continue to pay that. I know that animal control is, no offense, but a money pit, but it's our money pit, and I, I think it's better to be responsible than to spend four hundred and sixteen dollars per dog.
I got information today. I don't know if it's correct or not without actually getting the contract, but I had heard that Malakoff had just received a contract from them that was like thirty thousand a year and three hundred and ten dollars or three hundred and something dollars a dog. So I just not understanding why it's costing us so much more than it is in the other city.
I asked that question last time, and it's because they take, they do fundraisers, like the one that's coming up or just fixing to happen, and they give those, that fundraiser to the smaller cities and nothing to the bigger cities as less.
But they want to use Gunbarrel to do adoptions out of, and then we don't receive anything from that.
They do their fundraising income.
They don't have any, since we signed the contract that we have actually sent to the Humane Society?
I'll talk to Carol.
Since, since we signed the contract, I have taken ten dogs total. In two months, in two months. Correct. Those were the dogs that went to the, those were seven in July that went to the Humane Society, and then there's been three so far this month that have went.
He didn't have, he didn't have Humane Society, what would we then?
I would do what I did before. I'd contact rescues. I would continue to find homes for them. We have shipped a lot of dogs with Tina Hamilton's help. She has a contact with a rescue that ships all the way to New Jersey. We shipped a lot of puppies up to New Jersey. I took eight to Louisiana. It's a network. You still got to just, you have to network it. It's something that has to be worked every day. When there's dogs in the kennels, you have to be on the phone and you have to be knocking on doors per se to get people's attention. You have to have them posted. You have to get the puppies' attention. It sounds like a bleeding heart, but the bleeding heart is what gets the attention for the dogs. When they need help, you're going to find the passionate people are going to step forward.
Where are they taking them? They're? For intake. They either adopt them out or house them until they get adopted. No, they're not, not that local.
Whether we can get the funding or not, I don't know, but I think we probably can. So that would have some in order of viability. And I think where the secret for us is, is to try to maximize adoptions rather than relying on the ten a month to ship out. But now whether we can rely totally on adoptions and not have a contract with the city, with the Humane Society is another issue, and I think that's, that's where we're debating right now.
And getting into the adoption business unless we have a great plan in place.
Certainly, if we have an adoption program, these people shouldn't be using their own vehicles to adopt these out. They're going to have to have a budget. They're going to have to have transportation, gasoline money per diem. There's a lot involved in shipping these animals out by vehicle. I don't think we continue to rely on volunteers to do that. That's what we really want to try to do. And that's going to be an additional cost, too, that we haven't factored in.
I believe we also need a, at least a part-time person to fill in when Carol's not available. Weekends, evenings, you know, when, when there's an animal.
Well, we can provide volunteers to do that, I think. We're going to have to staff it some way. So when you put all that together, then it comes back to, well, how does this balance the four hundred dollars? It's not a one or the other. It's going to take money for us to invest. The question is, what do we get out of it? What's the cost of it? And do we get any better use of that money for animal adoptions or some that we're giving up to the Humane Society? We're going to have a trade-off there, I think.
Well, so I guess we just have like fifty thousand dollars in the budget.
Was a contract with them, the only option with them?
It says we can get out of the contract with this new one, I think, that you see that you noticed.
So we can't pay just per dog that we take over there?
Question I have, first, are we finding different sorts of the cats? The good, the good, both the good, so the good, can we actually find people when we go out there and their dogs come out?
And? Yeah, we're not saying that every time we go ask for it, every time the dogs out, we're going to run and take it. I'm a firm believer in giving somebody a warning the first time they go there. So I'm a firm believer in giving them a warning the first time. Same time, that's on, we don't have a tax base, we get to go over and something, you know? And my thinking is that we pay for about that.
Absolutely. I bet you. It's usually the same.
Then you're going to have to have people that are going to step up and be honest about this.
There's some of these people that are on this form. They're just, okay? They form a, and collaboration with another department to kind of get together for us. And every one of these fees, fines, did you figure them out? And this is presented via those ones, you got to say so, all of those fines, fees, uh, but again, this is appropriate, these papers, so this is a service that we provide for the kind of, they can afford to do. So I think it's, maybe a little bit more than it is anywhere else.
But again, I think that an offer amounts to the need to call out higher. That's the problem.
We're having significantly a lot of.
Their microchipping, it says fifteen dollars per animal, and then it says limit four dogs per household. What does that mean, four dogs per household on the, on the microchipping? Or mean you can't have more four dogs in your house period?
You can't have but four dogs in your house and one litter of puppies.
Okay. I thought, I knew there was a limit, but with it being right there, I was confused with them. Microchipping. About doing a Saturday volunteer, you know, I don't know if it needs to be, if you're saying a committee type thing or citizens that, I mean, I would volunteer on a, you know, on a weekend or whatever to come up and help register the animals.
Yeah, that would be separate.
Well, I volunteer, I don't ever think that I don't, but depending on the program, I don't volunteer, maybe they're, they're, they're not here.
No, I was just talking about for, to try to get things going, to get registration, just, you know, the initial registration, hopefully a lot of people, but then after that, yeah.
Do we have a database to put this registration in? I mean, do, do we have like a system that we can use already or does that have to be developed?
And talk with Ms. Rainey on, and Carol and Connie have both looked at and liked it, right? Well, this one was three hundred a year. So, I mean, it's minimal cost, and it's, it's got quite a bit of stuff in it. You know how much this other one is?
That point is free as long as it's by the.
But the program part is, I mean, it's something that she's going to be working with, so we'll look at both of them, whichever one she thinks is best for them, perhaps addable than either one of them. I mean, whatever works best for her and for the program. Be helpful on the enforcement side, too. We end up with a part-time animal control officer, he gets the dog one week, and the next week, the other one gets it back from the dog, and just next week, same dog. So then they, they know the dog's already been in the owner's. And we just need to make sure that the owner knows at the time that their microchip with us, that if you give that dog away and it's found running in our city and you have a same paperwork on it, you're liable for that dog. So, as it, it, it's registered to live.
Bear the responsibility to.
Yeah, y'all might want to look at the fees that we put on the bottom part of that. Because I, I put five hundred a thousand, five hundred first half thousand for the second, okay? And that was just throwing that in there because y'all are ultimately going to have to make the decision.
That's a little steep.
It is, it is, it's very steep. But I just threw that in there to see if anybody was paying attention to it. And, but I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I think those are a little high. The rest of it, I don't have, I don't personally have an issue with as far as the altered and unaltered prices.
The current, the current fees are too low. These fees are too high. We need to have some, we need to have some. Fifteen dollars, three hundred dollars, twenty dollars a day. So this would go with the fines if you pick up a dog, though?
Yes.
Even if it's not registered, it's not, we're going to have to change that. So what, we're going to charge somebody a pickup fee if their dog's out, we're going to charge them a pickup fee plus a day fee plus fine?
I'm picking feet and short feet will be the first time ever. First time I've had that, I think, we have one thing, so. First time we're picking up, it's a warning, maybe they picked up a fee, and we got it for a week, maybe for that. They go the same time, and it's, they go feet, short feet, and then, of course, that's the man.
So this is a court assessment.
That's her, that's her rat limicitation per city order.
We really need to address that they got fees and they, upset. First pickup is, they don't pay them. Maybe that's the case. No, maybe they pick up the first time, maybe time they.
Okay.
So we don't want to address that, uh, correctly? Pickup fee, pickup fee. Twenty dollars a day.
Well, you will if you're going to have a building that's going to be heated and that heat there. And that's, that's the look like where we're going.
What about a day?
Twenty-five, and then the second one has to be fifty.
Twenty-five on the first and fifty on the second. And, and, you know, some of, some of these folks, you pay, save their bucks to get their dog back, you know? So, we're going to, so that's something about payment plan, or, you know, we're going to have other options to be able to take that, that, just any, any, okay? Something, something needs to be based into this policy, allowing us the opportunity to do that.
We need to write in ordinance, we need to update.
Oh, he suggested, is that too much? Twenty-five, I mean?
Would that be just twenty-five?
The fifteen dollar pickup fee. Personally, I wouldn't want to go over twenty-five dollars per day. I mean, that's, you have somebody on vacation, so whether you have to, you know, get that out of there, there's too many variables there that can happen. I just think it's. Y'all said, y'all said the amount per day. And then if y'all give us a legal way to say, you know, okay, y'all were out of town, this was something, you know, it's not going to happen. You know, if y'all want to give us some legal fees, then I'd. Well, you can just up to a certain amount at their discretion.
Yeah.
I would say the pickup fee and the bird fee, you know, I mean, that's just, I mean, for longer having to deal with these dogs, I don't want to just fix to put her in the hospital or, or what's going on with that dog. You know, I mean, it's, it's major liability on us.
So, we said day fee, twenty-five, like the end, like what? Twenty-five a day? Well, bringing up. That's what I mean, because they were like, first time you guys. Do we want to find?
As soon as you can.
Do we want to find? Do we have the first? Do we have?
As soon as you can.
Twenty-five. Like the end, like what? Like a twenty-five a day? Well, bringing up. That's what I mean, because they were like, first time you guys. Yeah. Do we want to find?
As soon as you can. As soon as you can.
Do we want to find?
As soon as you can. Usually we can realize when, when it's at a station, we have a potential for setting off. We're at a point where we think, um, usually always on the first one unless it's a dog or something like that, depending on the first thing. I mean, we're taking first. I mean, if I have to, I have to say we're at a point for the first time, we're dealing with something.
What do you think about a hundred and? What is it now? Where is that? Um, now we're. Five, yeah. Four. So, I'm telling you, what is six hundred and four hundred? Four thousand. Four thousand. Four thousand. Four thousand. Will we keep it a dog? So, we're excited. So, if we.
These are, these are fans that are going through the portal. They're going to let us know that it's a donation. They just seem to present to the board, the board says that they're trying to be here. But they don't want to take it on a thing. They serve as other options. So, that you can do that page.
So, we're going to need our people. We need to learn. So, we're. We might go out to, you know, they're out, they have a plane, you know, they're not out here. You know, walk on the house door, grab the dog or walk up the alley, maybe a morning. Or you're not looking, you know, bringing back, but.
First off, it's.
If there's anything to face for after our first. The only thing that's going to require us to volunteer is for us. If it's safe, you have to have eleven dollars. If you ever. If you ever. If it's safe, you have to have eleven dollars. If you ever. 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 So, we're going to need to. That may society.
I think given where we are and where we're trying to go, I think this needs to be a good follow-up for us. It's also a good, a good issue for us to move on our own, do things and I recommend that we, you know, they know this.
Want to see if we can negotiate that back to thirteen? Another thought it was. Uh?
Okay.
I think that we're basically. The way. They're waiting. They're waiting. They're waiting.
What if they won't go back?
Well, we can just ask them. Why change it? They don't want to change it at all. Again. We're kind of, at a loss, we don't have any options, so.
Yeah. 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 Yep. That's what we've said. Take thirteen.
Yeah. They did put it out for three months. Okay, because we're over one of them, like we got thirteen, we're in the month of November, you know, whatever. So, we will move forward with all the numbers. Next, check. I guess all the next two, just our registration. So, I need to do it. My name is. I mean, that's supposed to be done. Our honor, we have our commander. We don't have to, you know, everything. It's over. We don't. Discussion regarding water burger variant.
We do have Joe Mundo here, our city engineer, and he just has a response to their request, which is on the regular meeting agenda. Is anyone else here for that item?
Water burger?
Water burger?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so if you guys would like to speak on this, this is just a discussion for council to discuss what was presented and what the variance is. And then our city engineer has a response as well. Okay. Joe, you, you can speak next.
My name is Shelton Grona. I'm the general contractor for Mr. Blinsky. He owns the, he owns all the, I guess the majority of the water burgers in this area. And so, he'd like to rebuild the, the water burgers right down the road, as you probably well know. And so, we just, we've just run into a lot of problems with the drainage issues there and trying to meet their criteria, I guess, that the city has on the books as far as their ordinance. So, we've sent the variance in and I guess we'd like, we ought to consider that at the council meeting on the variance. But specifically, we believe that the, the ordinance that's on books is, is very hard to, for a, for an individual downstream to be able to accommodate all the flow that that ordinance is asking for. Do I need to go any detail or how do you?
As much as you want. Have they been given your request, council response as well?
I, I'm just, I'm not sure how. So, the way it's written or the way that you would commonly develop a site is everybody downstream of the site. So, our site that we have there in the front, that site would be developed. And the flow coming off of that site, we have, if we go from full grass to full concrete, basically, you have to develop that site to not let any more water off faster than what. So, if it was a hundred CFM coming off, a hundred flow coming off in the beginning with grass flow, then whenever it's full concrete, it still has to be a hundred. So, you have to do a detention pond, so on and so forth to back it up. The, the property north of us would have to do the same thing. So, whenever they discharge, if they develop north of us and the water comes across our property, they should do the same thing. So, if theirs was grass, they develop, they shouldn't be able to come across ours. The way, the way it reads or the way it's being interpreted is that our drainage facility would have to accommodate all of the water burger plus all the upstream at full development. And so, we would be building the total drainage facility for all the upstream stuff. That's the way it's been, all the upstream area that's, that's coming across our property. And that's just not the way it's done anywhere. And so, I think you need to look at that law or the way that ordinance is written and the way it's being interpreted because it's not, it's just something we can't do. So, is there any questions on that or anything like that? Nope. All right.
Joe, yeah. And we've asked Joe to be here just because we have no idea how to read or understand all this engineering. So, obviously, we rely on our city engineer to kind of dumb it down for us and hopefully he can do that for you guys. Do you want to sit here?
I apologize, but first thing. I've got a. And I'll try to speak into this as much as I can remember. However, I am impaired by nationality. My father was born in Italy. I'm born in the United States, but, so I have a difficult time not moving my hands when I talk. So, so councilman, if I hit you with this, it's not intentional. Okay?
Number one. Water burger, number one, the water.
I, I think that we'll find there should be no reason to. From the city standpoint to lose this. If, if we could step through here incrementally and I believe that we find that. Proceed problem may not be quite as great as what we're thinking. But I think probably this is a. The purpose of this first sheet is simply to identify where the site is in the property's ground. So, the project sites marked to the right of that is furniture store. Uh, behind to the north is Gunbarrel City EDC. To the left, west is Gunbarrel City EDC as well. And then there's the Baptist church to the, to the northwest. The reason I identify that Baptist church is because the Baptist church area is the high point relative to this site. Generally speaking, the water flow, existing flow is northwest, southeast, down toward, let's say, the furniture store for target purposes. That's, that's important. Uh, this. This is the same site, but it's very few. Making a little better perspective. Point to note is that the street that mayor just put her hand on, Luther Lane Extension, is not really a street. I will pave surface. It's not a city right of way. Uh, however it got paved is neither here nor there. Facts are that it's owned by Gunbarrel City Economic Corporation. Certainly could be a street, but that's, that's a separate topic. It's not constructed as a street. It may have paved, but it's a street. You see as a roadway, oftentimes roadway may be pitched on the center of the section on either direction. And then there's curves and sidewalks where there's bar ditches, seals, whatever. This has none of that. It's relatively flat. With the adjoining road. The, the gentleman just spoke and spoke correctly. I can only tell you, he's not alone in frustration over the ordinance. The ordinance seems to be unsplit. Careful. And it's not making quite as old as that. It's unsplit. Yes, exactly. And, and a great example there, uh, that, that location, uh, would they perceive to be a large, large shit to their, actually their. Just opposite. Was that north? I don't remember the direction now. It was off the, it flowed down. Um, and of course, initially, they sent their surveyors out and their surveyors surveyed. And so, now, when the technical folks for that developer read the ordinance, there's a talk that here is highlighted that refers to upstream, uphill, uphill. And they don't have any surveying information for that. So, logically, it happens in virtue, happens. They initially are reluctant to try to consider that. There's plenty of information built. Engineers just have to do the due diligence to dig it out. So, the, the applicant is using for this, okay, let's just read this one second, just to be clear. It says that the projected runoff rates for the design of drainage facilities shall be based on the expected ultimate developed state of the upstream contributing area. And that's the real hassle, upstream contributing area. And we're talking about rate. We're not talking about runoff. I mean, clearly, if you develop a lot, you pave it, goes from grass to concrete. More water is going to run off that property. That's just that. What the law requires is that the rate of runoff from your development onto the next property cannot be greater after development than it was before. It's the rate. So, if you have more water, you slow it down to the pre-development rate. It'll just drain for a longer time. The reason you focus on rate is because rate is velocity. Water going faster causes erosion. You can have a backyard with a hill above and there's rainfall, the sheet flow every time it rains. Rain, rain, we'd all love to see some sheet flow. Somebody then goes and develops on that wall. And they gather that water and it's all over here now on one corner, coming down a little sway. But water's running much faster. They hit your backwater and it erodes. This law governs that issue.
More water is going to run off that property. That's just that. What the law requires is that the rate of runoff from your development onto the next property cannot be greater after development than it was before. It's the rate. So if you have more water, you slow it down to the pre-development rate. It'll just drain for a longer time. The reason you focus on rate is because rate is velocity. Water going faster causes erosion. You can have a backyard with a hill above and there's rainfall, the sheet flow every time it rains. We'd all love to see some sheet flow. Somebody then goes and develops on that wall. And they gather that water and it's all over here now on one corner coming down with no swale. But water's running much faster. They hit your backyard and it corrodes. This law governs that issue. You cannot increase the rate. Somebody can build whatever they want behind you, but hopefully not. But along your property on, however, better, whatever it is, they cannot increase the rate of that runoff to impact. So that's, that's the bone of contention, so to speak. However, this particular applicant, the, the drainage report does not deal at all with that uphill water. Sure, you had to know that uphill water runs downhill. That's fundamental. But I've got plenty, maybe you already have it. A sheet from the, from the, the drainage report, this was done, I believe, sometime during 2022. And this shows that the existing site, for watershed issue, they use an acreage of 2.38 acres. And for the proposed development, 2.38 acres. And if you look at the page behind it, they show the existing site. It's sort of outlined in green. And then the next page is just the site plan superimposed on that site. The issue is this site, this is the 2.38 acre, doesn't, this is out of the drainage report, does not acknowledge the drainage coming down this hill. How much is that? It's perceived be an onerous amount that we can't handle. But much like the East Main Street storage, when, when you got into the detail of it, it wasn't as onerous as, as we thought, as it was initially thought to be. And in fairness, it probably took three iterations of reviews. Finally, the engineering team went and went up the old, did the due diligence technically, to discover that it was damaging. And that, that's a frustration everybody perceives as the unnecessary, et cetera. So if we look at this sketch, we listed this out of the Henderson County CAD. And it's a broad brush. What it shows highlighted the project's height, which is a little rectangle, Indian lower, right here. And we highlighted that the maximum watershed, based on the whole contours, the maximum would be seven acres. So set at 2.38, it would be seven. The next step then, in typical drainage design, is that you establish this and then you do, we call it field editing, you can call it field confection, surveying, pick any name you want. You go and find out, if I drop water here, is there, it's going to run downhill by contour. Is there anything in the way that's going to intercept it before it gets to the site? And then you take to the extent that, let's say that there was a street here with a curve, that would collect all of the water down to that street. You would then take that out of these seven acres and see what's left. So you field edit to find out how big your watershed really is. That's the step. You start out with that blank survey. And generally, the more experienced folks, they understand before they go out there what they have to do and what they're going to have to do. And so the surveyors quickly will explore that topic. Find out where the uphill is, what's in the way. Somebody does that editing. In this case, it appears that that's never been done. And to the extent that in our reviews, we emphasize the need to look at that uphill watershed, there's been a reluctance to do that. As a result, the, the applicant submitted a, their drainage design using their rectangle site on a site plan, which is a big sheet underneath. They submitted that to TechSpot, because ultimately, the way, the way it works is on a drainage design, it meets, has to meet the city, in this case, city on OC code. And you can go down the street to the next city. They're all the same. There's, there's not a whole lot of originality in your ordinances. That's not a negative. And in your site plan, or in your planning ordinances, your design standards support that. You're not original. That's just, that's the way it is. And water runs downhill and in Texas, you've got Texas water law. It addresses that topic. And it protects each owner. In fairness, if this water burger is in sight tomorrow, they're, they will be protected the day after tomorrow from uphill development that would flood, say, their parking lot by the very laws and requirements that, in this case, builders. That's a little bit of the irony of it all, but that's okay. This photo is a photograph of Luther Lane Extension. And this is looking uphill. And you can see, I've only got three, I apologize. So somebody's got to share over here. There we go. I, I didn't count well. Okay. If you're looking up, you can see in general that, that it's a nice flat slab of asphalt. It just doesn't have any crown on it. There doesn't appear to be any ditches on the side, any swales, what have you. If you go up to the top of the hill and that, that cable post right there is pretty much a property quarter. That would be the northwest property quarter for this project. You can see, again, you look down the hill, that's the direction that water is flowing and it's flat. The applicant submitted the, the, the site only, the 2.38 acres to TechSpot. And TechSpot looked at it and based on that information, TechSpot said they had no problem connecting the water from the site into their state highway through their system. TechSpot did not review drainage design. They did not consider City of Gunbarrel City ordinances, stormwater drainage ordinances, or any ordinance. That's not their business. They don't have any jurisdiction on their ordinances. But what they said was that the discharge from, from the detention basin down at the, in front of this development, based on those 2.38 acres, would be excessive. Had the calculations been given to TechSpot for the actual amount of water that needs to be collected. My guess is, purely a guess, that TechSpot would also say that's a mistake. We're known for that, but as long as it's being detained, the rate at which it's coming into their inlets won't be any different after the development than it was before the development. It'll drain longer. And in fairness, that is becoming a problem once they come. TechSpot is, it's starting to, it's starting to get worse. But the, the instant that there's a rainfall, you want that surge of water to the extent that the newer developments will detain. That surge doesn't then cause the backup to leave us. And, and you know, on the one hand, we said, well, so what? That's TechSpot's issue. That backup, that pawns in the street, that traffic. And in this particular location, there are, I think it's on, on, on this, this sketch. If you look down at the very bottom of that, 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 there's three little green triangles down there on Main Street. Those are three inlets. That's a fairly close spacing for TechSpot to have that many inlets in that short of an area. And that's because this is a long six by three thirty four. This happens to be a low area. So they have more than the normal spacing of inlets to catch the water. So backing up, surcharging the inlets is, is not a casual thing. That can be a problem. The chief would certainly know that. Okay, so back to the, the topic of the due diligence. If the applicant were, when they read the ordinance, they say, okay, I have to go look at that uphill watershed. They might find that there's something that could, that intercepts the water and diverts it down to three thirty four. If you, I have one copy of this, I'm sorry. This is the west side of Luther Lane Extension. And Luther Lane, it's really not Luther Lane, right? But the property that the EDC owns is a hundred feet wide. The road sits nominally in the center. The current pavement is just hominid in the center. So there's a fair amount of difference. There's at least twenty, twenty-five feet on the, on the west side. This is looking up that stretch, looking up Luther Lane. And down here in the corner, at a pole, you see an inlet in the street. And behind the inlet, there's an opening, there's a drainage. So that suggests that without, if I had my, my feet on the ground, technically, if I were the, if I were the developers, engineers, we would be out there and would measure that and what have you. But what it suggests is that there already is provision to drain a swale into the state highway three thirty four stormwater system. We don't, can't tell by the naked eye how much of a swale that is. But that can be done with survey. That's part of the editing of the uphill watershed. That goes all the way up to Church Street. That swale area may be sufficient today that this entire uphill watershed, all the way to the fictitious Luther Lane Extension, is already going down into the state highway three thirty four system. So the issue may not be an issue, where it may be much smaller of an issue. But that's, you just have to do, you have to do the design. And in this case, from our review standpoint, from your requirement standpoint, that design has not been left, it hasn't been completed. Started, part of the information's there. And it really, in some respects, it might take less effort to complete it than to find it at that easy for me to sort of. So we recommend, there's two issues. Now listen to this, do anyone. One issue is what we've just spoken about. And that is that the water coming on to this site has not been adequately defined to find out how much it is and then properly detain it. If the water is more than the 2.38 acres worth that they're currently estimating, is there a base to handle it? Well, if I were doing it, the first thing I'd do is walk out there, look at Luther Lane, look at what's there. In the worst case, I would go to the EDC and see if I could get permission to trench along my west property line. If I did that, I would intercept part of the water. I'd intercept for my lot right here, that much. And still have this up here. So maybe I would ask for permission from the EDC to trench along their property line all the way up to the top of the hill, which is towards Church. Did that, that would intercept all of the issue here that's coming on to my lot. But I have a problem then. What do I do with it at the bottom of the hill? I can't just let that run out onto the sidewalk and onto the street. So I have to connect it into TechSpot. And that's a physical connection, that's an inlet, a catch basin. And that, that's a lot bigger expensive trenching. Perhaps I could divert half of it into that big oval open space on the left side of the development and put a detention basin in it. Maybe that works into the formula. Or maybe I go across that pavement and look to see whether I already have a bit of a swale along the full length of Luther Lane that already has an outlet going into the state system down at the foot of Luther Lane on the west side, right by that pole. That's, look at that, it's not the largest opening. It's a modest opening. So maybe, maybe when the design is done for that swale, maybe this is inadequate. You just need some modest curb grab to slow it down. And there's lots of, that's all fundamental drainage design. All stormwater drainage management. None of this stuff, it's, it's EDC's stormwater drainage. However, the point truly is that there are many ways to address this. And to date, they have not been addressed. One of the ways on this, this shown on this drawing that is simply not permitted by your ordinance is, you see the colors in yellow. In yellow, I, I highlighted in the uphill end of the, of the property, the existing contours. And all that means is the water generally runs perpendicular to the water. Then solid lines that we're drawing there are the new contours. And I highlighted in orange, the new contours of the, along the north property line. And those new contours are laid out such to make the water coming down the hill essentially divert the water, divert it off of this site onto the adjacent site. That's a violation. It's a violation of your ordinance, it's a violation of Texas law. It's a violation of everybody's property rights when somebody else diverts water onto your site. It just is not proper. And the day after tomorrow, when Water Burger is up and running and somebody builds uphill, they, the owner of the property at Water Burger won't want that to occur to them either. And they'll come streaming bloody murders to the city when that occurs. So that grading has to be changed. That, you're not allowed to divert water on somebody else's property. Right now, there is no flow coming from the south to the north onto this property that happens to be owned by the EDC. It doesn't matter. You know, some people say, well, that's EDC, a sawed-up person. It doesn't matter. That has nothing to do with it. Property ownership is ownership, doesn't matter. The next lot over is XYZ LLC. That, that's human beings, that's private property. Same with the furniture store, that's private property. There's a, there's a catch basin down at the foot of the hill. Furniture store is down to the entranceway. It was a little catch basin that's owned by the furniture store. It's not public, and it may catch water today. It's probably. It's probably put there today because it's downhill and it gets a lot of water. But that doesn't give any private property owner, adjacent, uphill, downhill, whatever, to specifically try to utilize it or connect into it unless they would get permission from that property. I don't know, but there's no, nothing on record to suggest that's occurred. There's a intention. So I think those, that grading in that north, northeast corner, those grading lines have to change. It's a violation of property rights. And it's a nothing to change. This, this is simply, simply done to divert water off of that site. And that's not the area to work. The area to work is uphill, follow the water. See what's already been diverted, calculate that, take it out of your formula. Look at what's left. Look at the area around you, there's plenty of space to work with water. There's an existing connection to TechSpot that, you know, if, if we're going to, we're, we're looking at that because that is the least cost to everybody who's put this system. It is uncorrected, but it's gotta be designed and designed correctly. And it would have to get the permission of the people that own that property. Which would be under a certain legal corporation.
Well, in her beginning, I had to say that I was sitting here, I'm long the property term. I mean, I asked about what's needed in that street. You say it was built as a street. I'm not sure what that means, but I am asking if it had ditches on both sides of that street as well as a long shared street. There's a section of that that's still, it needs to be. Well, you're certainly happy to work with one of them.
What I simply meant was, it's not a dedicated street.
Okay.
If it were a dedicated street, it might look exactly the same. Or it might have been built with crown and, and, and banners, or it might have been built, you know, with curves, who knows? But that, that would be, that's all a factor of city standards and framing, how much money you have available to do it. And that's what really waxes, waxes that situation. But it's, it's simply not a dedicated street. So if somebody wants to do something there, they need to go find out in the hills and call them.
I mean, to have the water we want to be in place or? I was interested, the EDC's in the city or do you need them to be in the city? I'm not sure if I said something about that, I probably didn't hear anything about it. I have a, as, as, as we're alone, the leader industry is, is very part of the city, but.
I, I would just say that, you know, the instant issue of, of Waterburner project and I, I don't know about anybody else in this room, but I, I manage this for Waterburner. It's like, like a lot of, it's a conversion. Um, the quickest solution here, I think, is for the, the technician or the, or the applicants to, to finish their drainage, their stormwater drainage design. Do it.
I just wanted to point out that the EDC is certainly willing to work on the, the, the side of the road in those things.
And the logic, their logical path might be to come to the EDC and ask for permission to do X, Y, or Z. I think that's the quickest way to, to get this built.
We need to table this for now and, and as, as Waterburner, I mean.
As an owner? So, I've heard this engineer talk for 45 minutes. I've spent $650,000 buying that property. I got $4 million on the table to build a new store. I deal with 14 cities, 14 counties. I have never seen anything like this. City of Maybank has been very accommodated. I'm real close to closing a deal. I bring y'all $70,000 a year in sales tax. Since y'all have been fighting with this since January, interest rate went up twice. It's gonna cost me hundreds of thousands of dollars more to build this store. It was my last project. I'm retiring. My son's taking over. I'm gonna build this project. It may not be in your city, but I'm gonna build this project. Thank you.